City Council meeting for the city of Bella Vista. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Always interesting with a little bit of delay. All right, Wayne.
Okay, we're gonna call the roll. Councilmember Wozniak? Here. Lloyd? Here. Lynn?
Here.
Here.
Burke?
Here.
And Williams?
Here.
Okay, everybody's present.
We'll go to citizen input. Is there anybody who's attending this evening that would like to address the council? Ready, we'll continue on. Under first the meeting, the minutes of the May 18th, regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move. Second.
We'll call all. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
The monthly financial report for April 2020 is available. Carrie will be more than happy to talk to you if you have any questions. I do have some good news regarding the April sales tax. The numbers are very preliminary at this point. We really don't know the number until we see that the money's in the bank because there's a service fee that we have to pay to the state. It never just seems to balance back. But the 1% city sales tax was actually greater than last year. So I applaud all the citizens of our great city who still bought locally and I probably see some pretty heavy internet sales tax, but we won't see that break out until later in the week. County tax did take a dip, but it was offset somewhat by our gains so that the loss is around $75,000 to $80,000. It'll be in that range. And even after we take that into consideration, our year-to-date surplus on the sales tax over the budget is greater than $200,000. So we're in good shape. And again, I thank all the citizens who helped all our local merchants. That was just great. I entertain, excuse me, a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolution on the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Okay, we have one piece of old business which is an ordinance. This is the third and final reading. It's amending section 42-27, the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista regarding the dog licensing requirement and incentivizing dog microchipping. This is councilmember Burke's amended version. Later on in the, in the meeting, we will talk about this again under item number F. This hasn't changed at all. I know the councilmember Fowler was working hard to change F. And the animal shelter and our animal officer are both in agreement with F. The old business, however, did not change. So you see that there's still an option for dog tags as well as an option for microchip. So this, both of those are not supported by the animal shelter nor the animal control officer. Steve, do you want to, you know, add anything to this?
I do. I, I would just point out that the amendment on the table today was, its primary intention was to provide choice for dog owners not to mandate chipping. Do believe in chipping and I do appreciate that councilmember Fowler has worked further on this matter to propose a solution that he brought to us at work session whereby dog licensing does go away, which is one of the primary interests of the city and the staff responsible for animal control. And so with that in mind, I would, I would suggest that we move to table the amendment from last time and we, we will make room thereby for Doug's proposition to come before us and we can discuss that more when we get to that on, on the agenda. So my, my move is to table the matter of the amendment on the third reading.
Okay, Jason?
I was just, I believe Steve, you're moving to table it indefinitely. Is that correct?
I am.
Okay. Well, that means it would basically, if the motion to table indefinitely is approved, this proposal just kind of goes away.
I think that's appropriate in anticipation, given our, our discussion at the work session. I think there is interest in, in Mr. Fowler's revised version of this. And again, we'll talk about that when we get it to it on the agenda.
Okay. Ready.
So you moved to table it. Did you see a second? Is that right?
I was second.
You were out of the room. That's the wrong word. Okay, so that's a formal motion then, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Larry's second.
Okay. Is there any final discussion?
Ready? Roll call vote. To table indefinitely. Lloyd? Linda?
Lloyd? Oh, sorry, I didn't hear, hear. Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Okay. Passes six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. The first is an amendment amending subsection 109-248B2 of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to reduce permissible fence height construction from four feet to three feet in a front yard and for other purposes. Doug, Tap is with us tonight. And are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, I entertain, oh, excuse me. So that was the first reading. Doug has asked that this plus the other ones that he's sponsoring all move to third and final. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Discussions.
Flynn?
Discussion before vote.
Okay.
I would just say, rather than go to third and final, I think, I don't know that any of these are that urgent. I, I would entertain that on the next go-around, but I'd like to keep this open for additional public input for another week, for another month.
Okay, we have a motion in a second before we vote. Linda?
I understand Steve's concern about this, but I think you'll find that the builders have been pushing for this for well over a year. And I commend Doug's department for getting these put forward. And we're in a very busy building season and I think getting these passed quickly will help keep house prices in line. And I would propose that we push it on to third and final.
This is the fence ordinance, right?
Yes. It's the fence in the front yard, Doug, as opposed to the fence around the pools, which is later.
Yeah.
Are we, are we gonna do them then one by one as to whether or not we're moving to third and final reading?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough. All right, very good. So this fence has nothing to do with builders.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry.
Anybody else?
You know, no, I, you know, it's been a point of contention and consternation, you know, ever since I've been aware of the discrepancy between the two fence sizes. And I know we have a small portion of the city of Bella Vista that's outside the POA, but it's very small. And a lot of that area is in Ward Three and I'm real familiar with it. And I can't imagine that that would really cause any difficulty in that area because it's been long and well established. If anybody was gonna build a fence in their front yard, they probably already would have done it. As a matter of fact, I do know of one in particular and his fence is already built and it's been there for a long time. So that would fall under the category of pre-existing, right? So he wouldn't have to manage or do anything with that fence. But I just don't, I don't see why we would continue to kind of set our residents up in the future. We do know the ACC isn't gonna do anything or move their requirement. So I'm, I'm, I'm for go ahead and move forward with this and getting it done.
Okay, Larry?
A question would be, would a, if there's an existing house in a non-Poa property, as Doug is describing, and they have an existing fence and they want to replace it, would they be able to replace it in kind or would they be subjected to the three-foot limitation?
I believe our sub, you want, aren't they, Jason?
It only, section two of the ordinance says that the provisions only apply to fences newly constructed on or after the effective day of the ordinance. I believe it would allow them to repair an existing fence.
Okay.
But if it's gonna be a brand-new fence, it would have to come within the ordinance requirement.
Correct. One that's nonexistent today, that would be subject to the three feet, but if they had a four-foot fence today, they could replace that in kind.
Well, they could, they could repair it. They could repair it. But it, because it only applies to newly, fences newly constructed. So if they tore down their, their four-foot fence and put a brand-new four-foot fence, they couldn't do that. They could fix their existing four-foot fence.
Okay. Doug, are you comfortable with that?
It's Doug or Doug Cap?
Both of, both of you, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, I, the fence that I'm aware of won't be torn down. It's actually very well, very well-built, very nice fence. So it's not going anywhere anytime soon.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this one doesn't bother me so much. I was really thinking ahead. I thought we were looking at these as perhaps a package to suspend the rules for several of these ordinances. It's really, when we get to the tree ordinance, Steve, that I think we ought to let that bake a little bit more.
Okay, any more on this? Okay, Wayne, let's take it to vote.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
This is just on the suspension of the rules.
Third reading. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I have to read it. Amending subsection 109-248B2 of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to reduce permissible fence height construction from four feet to three feet in a front yard and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any last words? Or any, Wayne? All right.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending subsection 103-49F of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to modify concrete reinforcement requirements in footings and foundations and for other purposes. Any discussion at all? Larry?
My, my only concern is with the chair spacing. The support for the rebar is listed to be not exceeding six feet. My concern is that number four bars are pretty flexible and that a lesser spacing would be more appropriate since we're reducing the number of rebars in the bottom of the, of the trench. My suggestion would be is that it's a maximum of four-foot spacing as opposed to six-foot. That's a technical thing, but they call them chairs that support the rebar. Sometimes they're plastic, sometimes they're metal, sometimes they're a block that's split. So it's a variety of things the contractors use. I'm assuming our inspectors allow any of those devices. But it's preferred that they use a, a manufactured product that is more secure and probably more stable. But the suggestion would be is to reduce the spacing of the support from not exceeding six feet to not exceeding four feet. That's, that's my thought. It's technical. You can do as you see fit. So that would be my request.
So you think that two runs would sag more than three runs?
No, I'm, I'm thinking that whether you have two runs or three runs, if the spacing is six feet, it's more critical having two than having three because you've got, you've got one less chance of getting the rebar where it's supposed to be to support the, the footing. So it, it's just a matter of, it's probably, I, I, it may sound being picky, but it, it's one that if your inspectors inspect it and the installers stand in the trench with the closer rebar spacing, there's a better chance that they're gonna stay where they're supposed to be and that's three inches from the bottom.
Linda?
Well, I think, so Larry, you're asking us to increase the requirement from what is currently on the books. And the other point, the other point I would make is at the work session, Doug pointed out that the neighboring municipalities don't even require rebar in the footings.
Well, there aren't many of those, I think.
Yeah, the, the SEC.
I don't think that, go ahead, Doug.
Neighboring communities do use two-runs supported in the bottom of their footer, but that's not required by code.
Okay, that's what, yes.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I, I think, I think Larry's working towards a motion to amend. I'm not sure, I think we had technical difficulties getting Larry on there. This would not place for that kind of thing to be worked out. So I don't know where we stand, not having amended in writing, an amendment in writing.
That's true. We would have to let it ride until the next meeting.
Well, it's, it's the first reading, right?
Right.
I mean, are you looking forward, Doug, like to move this forward tonight? Is it, is it critical we move it forward tonight? Of all the, so a guy like myself, not being an engineer, not having been involved in this business, this is a tough call for me. It's hard for me to really have an opinion on your proposal versus Larry's proposal. You know, structural engineer I am not. So I have to rely on really expertise, the, the expert's opinion on this, you know, to, to kind of help manage me through this. I mean, if you, if, if you think that's a big change and it's gonna make a big difference, I have, I have to go by your guidance.
He just indicated it didn't make a big difference.
Well.
Of all the ordinances, the two that I would like to see, go ahead and let us start enacting are the, this one and the frost line. When you lay down a large section of rebar, I don't think that they're gonna sag out of the bottom third. I do understand Larry's concern, but I, I don't think it's gonna take us out of the unsafe mode when you look at a number four rebar between chairs.
The comment that made, that concerned me the most during the work session is, you know, we were requiring three and maybe once the inspector left the site and sometime in between then and when they poured the concrete, there's kind of rumors that maybe some of the builders might be taking some of the rebar out. That's what concerned me probably more than anything. And I don't know what we do to mitigate that, but hopefully there's some, something we could do. You know, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not looking for an answer right now. I'm just saying that that needs to be looked into. So unless anyone else has anything, I, I make a motion to approve the ordinance as stated.
Wait, wait.
Linda?
Don't we need to make the motion to suspend, suspend the rules and take it to third and final first?
All right. There's a delay back and forth, but yes, you're absolutely correct.
Well, I would make that motion, but Doug's already got one on the floor is the problem.
Doug's motion is out of order, so Mayor, I think you can go ahead and entertain Linda's motion if you want.
Okay, so I'll entertain Linda's motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Wayne?
Okay, roll call vote. I'm suspending. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Wozniak? And Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried five one.
Okay, I'm now reading it for the third time. Amending subsection 103-49F of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to modify concrete reinforcement requirements in footings and foundations and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any last words? Okay, Wayne?
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried five one.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending subsection 103-49E of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to reduce the required frost line depth from 24 inches to 18 inches in new construction and for other purposes. Yes, Larry?
I guess one comment is, in talking with area building inspectors in Northwest Arkansas in our area here, we've seen frost depths exceeding 18 inches. But to their knowledge, there have not been any identifiable or measurable frost damage resulting from any heaving where the frost has penetrated more than 18 inches. So I think I don't, I don't see any issues at all with this, even though we can have frost in our area here greater than 18 inches on a severe winter.
Thank you. Anyone else? Linda?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take this to third and final reading.
Second.
Larry's second. Any last words? Okay, so you're voting to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried.
Thank you. I'll now read it for the third and final, amending subsection 103-49E of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to reduce the required frost line depth from 24 inches to 18 inches in new construction and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? Hey, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Last words? Okay, Wayne? All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Next ordinance is amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to add an Article Four, unsafe and hazardous trees to Chapter Two. Nuisances to require the removal of dead or hazardous trees. That was the first reading.
Yeah, I hope this is one, as, as I've said, I hope this is one that, in the absence of some sense of urgency around this, that we do not suspend the rules. We adhere to the rules and move forward with three readings.
Larry?
My, my observation would be is that currently the POA, Bella Vista POA, so all Bella Vista POA properties, and I'm assuming that would affect Cooper-owned properties and reserve properties that are a part of the POA, are already covered by a similar rule in the POA schedule of rules to cover this, if that's my understanding. And so the result is, is that what we're really doing here is we're incorporating any non-Poa property into this standard for tree nuisances. And so I think, I think in bottom-line substance, this is the only really impact that this has on the city itself. Non-Poa properties become incorporated into this tree removal for diseased and hazardous trees.
Now, I did speak with Tom Judson about this. He was concerned that somehow we might be proactively going out and looking for trees. And I assured him that is not the case. We have neither the manpower nor probably the budget to do so. This is to accommodate residents who are concerned that there may be property damage because of a tree and that it would be handled on a case-by-case basis, but we are not proactively going out to become tree police. And he was fine with that. He did mention that they also have a bylaw that covers this and that's fine. As Larry noted, do have residents that are not in the city and I get calls about trees from both POA residents and non-Poa residents. So this will bring it in line. Any other thoughts? So what's the general feeling? Steve, do you want to put a motion on the table? Oh, wait a minute, no, we'll just let it run.
We don't need it.
We don't need it. So is the general consensus, you want to let it ride until next month?
Yes. Go ahead, Jim. I think Jim's got something to say.
Is, is this primarily gonna be driven by residents calling in with concerns?
Yes.
Okay. Cause you know, we had a situation on our street where you had, you know, we have a lot of pine trees over here. Someone planted them years ago and they're getting very large now. So you have limbs hanging over houses on adjacent properties, right? And you have all these pine needles falling on the neighbor's house, piling up in the, you know, the valleys and things like, I mean, I'm talking about significant, you know, and causing damage to shingles. So I'm just kind of curious, I mean, how this is gonna be viewed if you get a call like that, have all these branches hanging over. They're not getting ready to fall off, fall down or anything like that, but they are causing damage to the neighbor's house. So I'm kind of curious like what the imminent threat line is gonna be and who's gonna make that call.
You're gonna make the call between leaves and pine needles?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, but you're gonna have people calling you, you know.
Well, too bad, so sad.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up, Jim. You know, people are gonna be calling, so you know, you, somebody's gonna have.
See, I'm just telling you, if you're gonna get picky, that's what's gonna happen. I got them too and I don't care, I'll just clean them up.
If you look at the.
I don't have the twol tree falling down.
If you look at the actual wording of the ordinance, you will see it talks about hazardous trees and it defines what the hazardous tree is. It's not meant to address leaves, needles, or anything of that sort. So it's, it's under definitions. If you have, if you have your packet in front of you, you can see it. And it doesn't mean that we actually take down a whole tree either. If there's a limb that appears to be. If there's a limb that appears to be threatening a neighbor's house and it's sort of hanging, then we will go and lob it off, but we won't take the tree down. Okay, back to the consensus. Let it ride for another month? Yes, no, maybe?
Let her go. Let her go.
I'd be in agreement to residing with the first reading tonight and decide next month whether we want to move it to second and final.
Okay. Fair enough, that's what we'll do. Okay, the next ordinance is amending section 109 to fit pools and spas of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to require re-fence enclosure around all outdoor pools, including above ground, spas and hot tubs greater than two feet in depth to restrict access by children. Discussion?
I had a question for Doug Tap about this. You know, I've known people that had above ground pools and say it was five foot high or so, and they kind of had a ladder getting up to it, and they could put the ladder up so you know, little kid can't wander over and fall in it because it's hard to get, it's hard to get access. But I was just curious what most communities do about the above ground pools. They, most of them require fence nowadays or?
Some of them do and some of them don't. The instance with the ladder, if it has a ladder and it locks in place, those don't always work forever. And so when the ladders fail and then kids crawl in the pool and drown, that's, that's what we're trying to prevent. We get, we get a good number of, of call ins from citizens who say, we live next door to a house with an above ground pool and my kid could go get in there if he wanted to, well, is there anything we can do about it? So.
Yeah, so this is in response to real situations. I mean, you, you get people concerned about it.
Yes, sir.
Because it's obviously safer if we pass this, I mean.
Okay, Larry?
I guess my reservation is I haven't had time to fully review all of the fire code requirements, and I'd like an opportunity to do that, would ask the council's consideration that we only apply first reading to this ordinance.
So this will require a fence around spas as well or hot tubs?
Yeah.
Just what it reads, what if the hot tub actually has like a cover that is, you know, can be closed?
The cover will fasten, that's sufficient on a spa.
Well, let, let me, let me tell you what the proposal says. Now, the proposal in front of you says that outdoor pools and above grounds, spas and hot tubs greater than two feet in depth shall be protected by a fence designed to restrict access by children. Such fence shall meet the requirements of the R S O Fire Prevention Code in this article. So there's no exception in your proposal for a cover on hot tubs. You'd need to modify it to account for that. So if it was two feet deep, that's what's going to engage your fence requirement.
Well, depending on the cover, I'm not sure if that works anyway. You know, I read about an incident recently of a child at a campground and there was a cover on the septic tank and they walked on the cover and it wasn't strong enough to hold them and they drowned. So, you know, if you have a cover on your spa, but a kid could walk on it, you know, if it's a soft cover, it might not hold them out.
Larry?
I guess in part, partial response to John is that some of the covers are like a four inch thick foam covering with a vinyl cover over the top and bottom. They will support a small child, but probably not one that's in six to eight years of age and, and older likely. But my concern is, is that some states require enclosures for, for above ground pools and spas that are less than four feet in height from the ground to the, to the top of the, the wall or top of the tub, which I think is reasonable for most children if you don't, don't have a stairs or a step that can be moved or removed. So I think it might be overkill, and I guess I take myself personally, I do have a hot tub, we don't use it, it has a cover. I have a movable step section to make it convenient to get into it and I, and it's in a location that's not readily amenable to a fence because it's under a deck. So I, I, I have concerns that we may be adopting a rule that doesn't make a lot of sense in, in a number of applications. So that's my reason for reservation about moving to third reading at this point. Can, can we get a copy, Mayor, of the fire protection rules that talk about this and see what they say?
So can you get a copy of the fire protection? Okay, yep. Yes, you can do that, Larry.
Thank you.
So I would suggest, I, yes, Linda?
Well, this also covers in-ground pools, not above ground pools, am I correct?
It covers, it covers both.
That's, that's what I thought. I was at a house today which has an in-ground pool and anybody who wants to can walk down the driveway right into the pool. There's no enclosure at all. And I'm assuming Doug, those would be grandfathered?
No.
Or not?
No, they're already required to have some sort of barrier there.
What if it was built before the city?
Well, that's a different story. We'd have to look at the situation.
Which this one was?
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't bless it without full knowledge because I, I mean, it, we, it's just a city, that sounds like a particular circumstance we'd have to look at, I just couldn't tell you right now.
Larry?
I would be surprised that the state rules, which are, are, are part of the requirement for local building inspectors to follow, would have allowed an in-ground pool regardless of age unless it goes back 30, 40 years to not have a fence surrounding it. It would be surprising.
This is 15 years old, this one.
I, I'm thinking that's within a timeframe that the state rules would have already required that, which would have been subject to the local building inspector's responsibility to enforce.
Okay, well, let's let it ride. And Larry, Doug will get you the, the fire codes that you requested. Does anybody else want to see them?
Yes, I'd like to.
Mr. Mail it.
Doug, I was talking to the party, I didn't hear that. Okay, so you might as well send the fire codes to everybody.
Okay.
All righty, shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay. The last ordinance of the evening, sections four dash 25, four dash 26, and four dash 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to require physical identification beyond a dog in the form of a tag or microchip to modify the reclamation fees for dogs impounded by the city and to eliminate the dog licensing requirement and for other purposes. I mentioned before, Councilmember Fowler has worked very hard on this and even since the last work session, he's been working with the animal shelter and with our, our animal control officer and all, all of them now in agreement that they can live with the ordinance. So thank you, Doug. Is there any discussion? Doug, do you want to say anything on behalf?
No, it's just like you said, I mean, put in considerable time on this, did a lot of research on dog chipping, why we have, why cities have city licensing in place. I read ordinances for Fayetteville, Rogers, Bentonville, and I tried to take, you know, portions of each one and, you know, and, and tried to, to, to solve for the city really wanting to get out of licensing business, which I think we all understand, but still require owners to have identification on their dog and give them a choice of which method they would like to pursue. And then also, as far as the reclaiming of an animal, you know, write some incentive into the, actually like three different options, you know, so if somebody reclaims your dog doesn't have a chip, it's a little more expensive to get your dog back if you don't want to get it chipped, but if you want to get it chipped, you know, it's going to cost you just $20 instead of 25. We did have to rewrite the second impoundment because in case a dog was chipped and was, and came in with a chip, so that the penalty wouldn't be quite, you know, as stiff for that person. So just made that $25. And, and, and then for the, for the third impoundment and all subsequent impoundments is $75 for reclamation of the dog, of the dog and actually a requirement that the dog be microchipped at that point. I mean, you've had two other opportunities, this is the third time, so, you know, I wrote that in there because it's, it, it, it's past, it's past what's reasonable. So anyway, I worked with Leslie, Lori, very hard. I, I will tell you that they are both really outstanding people. And, and, and as a side note, you know, I enjoyed, you know, getting to know them and understand a little bit more about what they do. I did ride with Leslie for a half a day. I told you, we rescued some ducks that morning, which was kind of interesting. Went out and sat, you know, via house that had a barking dog, just to kind of see how she handled that. We didn't find any stray dogs at that particular time, but, but anyway, spent a lot of time and I hope this satisfies all parties, it sounds like it does.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Larry?
One comment is, and I think I understood it, Doug mentioned that there's no discount for the third and subsequent times that the dog is retrieved. My question would be is if we don't offer city dog licenses again or any longer, then what, is there another acceptable identification tag that an owner might use to, to replace the microchip?
Well, I think, I think what you're saying, Doug, is, is that they could have a tag saying, hi, I'm Fido and I belong to, and I live at this.
It's the same thing, it's the tag or it's the chip. Yep. After the third time, it's, it's required microchipping.
I think if I could, that's, that's the part where, where it does a little bit for me. I appreciate all the work that went into it. I'm prepared to support this except for that third strike, and I appreciate it. I struck out a few times in my baseball career, so I understand three strikes and you're out. But I don't think there should ever be a, a time when somebody is showing up to get their, to get their dog and they're being told, you can't have your dog unless you microchip it. It seems to me we would still give them the choice of you can either microchip it or you can put a tag on them, but you got to do one or the other. And, and so I'm gonna, I, I hope for a revision to that section 426, number three. I'm hoping for a revision there, if it is, I jump on board with this. But as long as there's something that mandates a dog be chipped against the owner's will, I'm going to stand on that principle and oppose.
Okay, fair enough. Linda?
I want to thank Doug and Steve also for all their work on this issue, and I'm a little unclear about something in this proposal. Are, are you suggesting, Doug, that we still offer city licensing?
No.
Okay, my confusion is when you say a dog tag, to me, that's a dog license tag.
No, it's just a, just identification tag, a caller with identification tag, or if you have no other means of identifying the dog without doing that, just, just a means of identification, and we identified either a tag or a, that's, that's still a requirement.
I think that's a great idea, and, and it might suggest that the animal shelter wants to get in the dog tag, the identification tag business for a, for a fee as well. That way they cover both sides of it. You can microchip or we can create a tag for you and then you're on your way.
Hey, Larry?
I'm, I'm a little reticent about the third time and out in terms of the option of doing something else besides in requiring microchipping as the drop dead position. So I would, I would opt to offer something else if they do have a tag on the dog as well for a lesser fee than what's shown here in the, in the ordinance.
Okay. Anybody else?
Why don't we go ahead and vote on it as it is? I make a motion.
Second.
Are you moving to suspend the rules and third and final reading?
Motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved.
Okay, second. Second, okay. All righty, I think we've talked it through.
Okay, this, the roll call is, is on suspending the rules and moving to third and final. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Pass, four to two.
Okay, I'm now reading it for the third time, amending sections four dash two five, four dash two six, and four dash seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to require physical identification beyond a log in the form of a tag or microchip to modify a reclamation fees for dogs impounded by the city and to eliminate the dog licensing requirement and for other purposes. So that's the third reading. Does anybody want to make any?
I'd just like to say one thing, in researching this, as everyone knows, I was not in favor of mandated microchipping either. Two of the three cities that I researched did require microchipping, and I think you'll find there's pretty broad support for mandated microchipping across many cities across the country. And I'm not saying that's right to do it here necessarily, but again, I thought, you know, after the third time, you know, you had your opportunity and plus, on the first two times that the dog has been impounded for being, you know, running loose and not having identification, hopefully there's incentive to get that done versus those two, you know, during those first two times, because it is less expensive to have the dog microchipped than it is to pick it up without having it microchipped. And also, I say, by the third time the dog comes in and nobody proposes anything different, trust me, the animal shelter knows the dog and who the owner is anyway, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
This is, now Linda?
I, I understand Steve's concerns about the three strikes issue, but come on now, people, if you're going to have a dog, you need to be responsible, because having a dog running loose causes problems for neighbors, it causes problems for people who are driving, causes problems for the city. So people just have got to be responsible when they have a dog.
Thank you, okay, I have a motion on the floor?
Yes, you do.
For a second.
One second. John?
John, yeah.
Okay, Larry?
One comment would be is that I, I agree with Linda, but as long as the dog has a tag which provides proper identification, to my way of thinking, for the animal control officer, it provides ownership identification as well and as easily as a microchip does. So I'll be voting no on this.
Okay.
Let's move on. One last thought, just from the practicality of it all, I, I know that the people that work at the animal shelter, they, they love the animals, they, they do it out of love more so than, than as a, a full job. And I can't imagine that, that they would be comfortable taking a dog against the owner's will and putting a microchip in it when that's not what the owner wants. So I, I can't imagine that practically, practically speaking, that it ever comes about. I, I don't see the people down there doing that.
Actually, they were very steadfast on mandated microchipping when this all began. Trust me.
Okay, let's move on with the, please.
Okay, this is a vote to approve. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Carried, four to two.
Okay, now we're moving into the world of resolutions. The first is adopting the Northwest Arkansas Razorback The first is adopting the Northwest Arkansas Razorback Greenway Operations and Management Plan. Friday morning, uh, councilmember Burke met with me um and he expressed his uh concern as he had did as he had done at the at the work session um regarding the garbage and the map showing that the extension um five mile extension through the city up to the Missouri border. Um. Now, we do have a bicycle master plan that was passed back in 2015, which does show it as part of the as part of the overall plan someday. Um, I did have Doug type up and send those changes out to you so that you would have the weekend to be able to digest it. I did call Tim Conklin at uh Regional Planning, and his comment was that it was in there simply to show the future. But he didn't have any any problems at all if we wish to remove it. So let's open it up for comments. Steve, do you want to kick it off?
Sure. I just, as I said at work session, I I think projecting that there's going to be another five miles is entirely premature and presumptive. It's absolutely unnecessary to the agreement. Uh, we're getting ready to take on a small section of the greenway, probably less than a quarter of a mile. All of the uh conditions are there. Uh, that's what we're the uh the 2015 master plan in in my opinion is uh at this point obsolete and irrelevant, especially as we stand uh on the cusp of a strategic plan, the 2040 uh comprehensive plan of that will be before the city council for vote uh probably next month. So uh with that in mind, the 2015 plan may have served uh served us well to get us where we are today, but uh it's no longer relevant, I think, uh as far as references to it. That five miles is not the city's call. The city doesn't get to call whether or not there's another five mile uh path through there, so entirely unnecessary to the document, and I just thought it ought to be removed.
Well, I I think the city does have a say in it. Steve, I don't think it's just automatically going to happen.
Right, I got, we can't do it by ourselves.
Uh, that's exactly right. And that's what I'm saying. There's, there has to be a coalition of a whole bunch of people. I I I can appreciate that many people involved as closely as perhaps I have in putting together the plans and everything else for the trails, but the city definitely would have a a place on the table and and could voice its concerns if if that's the will of the council of the day. Um, are there other comments?
Well, I had a question for Steve. I I was wondering if he was against the greenway going five miles through Belavista?
I can't be for it or against it. I don't have any details in front of me as far as who's gonna pay for it, what the what the our role's gonna be. What's up, John?
Hey, Larry?
Uh, I think the uh significant part of it is when you read the uh estimated costs of maintaining it, I'd like to see what the projected staffing requirements are, what department is going to be responsible for for overseeing the maintenance and uh operation and annual costs, what kind of equipment we need to purchase for that to maintain the trail, whether it's a quarter mile or otherwise, what the estimated budget requirements are going to be based on the guidelines that are in this in this manual itself. Uh, to me, it looks as though we're probably looking at one full-time equivalent employee from what I see in there. Uh, and there may be more, and then what other equipment is warranted before I'm ready to uh to adopt this, I'd suggest that maybe we table it until we have more information.
Please understand that if we are going to be increasing headcount, going out and buying equipment and all that kind of stuff, all that has to come to you for your approval, particularly around the budget time. This is simply adopting an operation and management plan that is going to be consistent with all the other cities.
And 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 respectfully, Mayor, the management plan says it commits us to doing this. They have ranges of costs per mile, per thousand feet, per whatever uh in this in this management plan. And it does make commitments, even though, yes, it has to come back for formal approval in the budgeting process, but it's irrespective of that because we're saying today, we're gonna do it regardless. So even though, yeah, it comes back, it'll be a perfunctory rubber stamp exercise in our budgeting process because we've made this commitment. And I'm concerned and curious what that commitment really translates to in dollars and cents.
Has there been any commitments made to a five mile trail yet?
No.
Okay, it's just part of a future plan, right? It's something to to envision. It's something to to that's out there that may or may not happen. So there's no commitment to any dollars or anything right now. That will come into play later when this actually comes into consideration uh of actually happening. And I'll I will tell you, whenever I saw that some of this the the paragraph and then another sentence was removed, I really wasn't happy about it. Um, I I I like, you know, dreaming a little bit. Um, and I and I will tell you, so whenever I read it, this uh this this uh greenway that that may or may not happen, if it does, the future greenway extends approximately five miles from the Veterans Parkway following Little Sugar Creek. Um, it says accounting bikes, pedestrian, roller skaters, wheelchairs, and other human propelled uh propelled issues. And I don't know, you know, it says presumptive. I'm not exactly sure what that means. I don't know why this is viewed as a potential negative, you know, uh to have plans for something like this in our future. I will tell you, again, and I've said this a lot, we're we're able to move around quite a bit, you know, my wife and I, and these regional greenways, I mean, they're like a wave of the future. People absolutely love them and they get out and they enjoy them, you know, it 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 gets them uh uh outs- gets people outside. It's a healthier lifestyle. I guess we would rather people sit inside, you know, behind their PCs and poke around on them all day long or watch Netflix or uh Amazon Prime or something like that. I don't know why we're not looking forward to encouraging people, you know, to a healthier lifestyle. And I will tell you, once again, I come back to uh the meeting at Cooper Elementary in the cafeteria slash gym, whatever it was, there was so much excitement over that basically greenway that's gonna go from Blowing Springs out to Metfield. People are excited about things like these. We have really good friends right here in Belavista that they ride the greenway and go south like three and four times a week. They absolutely love it. We had uh the 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 gentleman I told you about last week when I pulled into Sonic to get a drink. He was pulled in with his bicycle and a device he put together for his two young sons and rode up from the north end of Bentonville into Belavista. I mean, here these people are out enjoying the day. I, there may be some costs associated with the future greenway. I don't know what that's gonna be. We can figure it out then if it actually happens. But this is out there and it's been out there for a long time, and people are very aware of it, you know? I mean, it's not a big secret or anything like that. This is not like a plan in shovel ready, like to go tomorrow. I I just don't understand what what the negativity could possibly possibly be surrounding this. And not only when it goes up north, we've, the only thing I would be for taken out of this might be the map because the map, it's just size something to look at right now. We don't even really know where that five miles, where it would actually track right now. Um, they would figure that out later, but it would bring residents on the northern, I mean, on the uh in Belavista on up north and bring this greenway into play for them so they could get out on the greenways as well, just like the people that are in the south part of Belavista or or living out toward Metfield. As far as economic impact is concerned, there was a study done. You know, people that own homes along along the greenway, their house values increased like 25% and people that live like a block away, you know, in house values increased 10%. People want to live around areas uh uh um you know, like I'm gonna call accommodations for lack of a better word. I can't pull it out of my mind right now. But I just don't see why we want to shy away from this right now.
Doug, you're you're making arguments for five miles of trail. That's not what we're entertaining tonight. Alls we're entertaining is an agreement that for the portion of the greenway that enters Belavista, that we have certain responsibilities to maintain it. This is not a proposition. This is not a proposition to approve the five mile greenway. It's completely unnecessary and in the sense of we don't know who would pay for it. We don't know who would provide land access for it. We don't know any of those things. It's premature and presumptive to think there will be someday. There may, there may not be. We'll take that when the time comes. Tonight, all we're talking about is a maintenance agreement.
Doug?
Well, I, with Doug, I was very disappointed that it was taken out.
I agree also.
Uh, but let me let me say one, I I I know I told this to the mayor and to Steve, I think also to Doug, but I want to make sure everyone has the benefit of the comment. The 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 version of the operations plan in your agenda is the one from the work session. Uh, Steve, I believe it may is gonna be advocating amending it to to the new version, which deletes those sentences from it. So you would have an opportunity to vote on what Steve is wanting to do and then potentially vote on the whole thing as well. So it has not been quote unquote taken out until you approve the amendment.
Steve, are you are you?
I did. I I moved to amend the agreement to remove references to five miles of greenway that doesn't exist.
Okay, is there a second? No one wants to second?
Mayor, that would die for lack of a second.
Uh, I'll second it simply for discussion purposes.
I think we've pretty much discussed. Did anybody want to discuss before we uh vote on on the amendment? Yep.
Well, if you read your 2040 plan, about 35, 40, or 50% of that leans real heavily on bike trails. This is just another bike trail. And all the connectivity it's gonna bring us.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll always say this is a lot more than just a bike trail. This provides access for people that cannot get out on, if you want to call it the bike trails, um, wheelchairs, roller skaters, pedestrians, et cetera, and it's it's gonna be uh a concrete path that that people that have difficulty walking or getting around otherwise will be able to utilize.
Hey, for once, I'm not fighting on this. I'm all for it.
That this is not like a plan. I know it's a maintenance agreement, but it also envisions what might be possible in the future, which has been discussed at large by a lot of people in the community, and I think if people knew this was in here and we were trying to extract it out, they'd be very disappointed.
Okay, let's take it to a vote on the amendment then, please.
Okay, this is a vote for the amendment that Steve offered. Councilmember Lloyd?
No.
Councilmember Flynn?
No.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Nope.
Councilmember Wilms?
No.
Councilmember Fowler?
No.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Okay, it's not amended.
So one to five.
Okay, so we go back to the original resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Second.
All right, any last words so we can move on?
Big proponent of of uh what we have in place today in terms of uh on the verge of opening up 90 miles of of hiking and biking trails. Uh, proponent of that, where we are today, I think is sufficient. I don't think we need to pile on additional uh extensions at this point, and I just I just feel like the uh the references to those are inflammatory, presumptive, and entirely premature.
Okay, let's go to the vote, please.
Okay, this is on approving the plan in your packet. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Okay, it passed, five to one.
Getting moving on to the next resolution, authorizing the City of Belavista to enter into the Northwest Arkansas Razorback Greenway Alliance Agreement, an interlocal cooperative agreement pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated 25 dash 20 dash 101 at Sitkway. Perhaps, counselor, could you uh just give us the thumbnail sketch of what an interlocal agreement means?
Interlocal cooperation agreement is a specific type of agreement that's entered pursuant to state law and particularly the Interlocal Cooperation Act. It's mainly more formal, uh, but really it's just an agreement whereby governing entities can uh work together, cooperate, and uh for any particular purpose, they may deem it to be in their best interest to do so. There is an existing interlocal cooperation agreement among the existing greenway jurisdictions. Uh, they have uh, they're agreeing or wanting to include us in this. Since City of Belavista, we will also now have uh greenway mileage, and so that is the reason for this uh for this amended amendment. Uh, you will notice in your packet, there's a letter from the Attorney General Leslie Rut- Les- Leslie Rutledge, and the reason for that is that her office uh has to find that the proposed agreements meet the minimum requirements of law. She doesn't sign off whether she approves or disapproves of it. She just, her office determines whether or not it meets legal requirements. They found that it didn't meet legal requirements. That letter is in your packet. And so you'll see from the actual agreement in your packet, there is a a board that exists that has certain membership. Certainly, the City of Belavista uh will have opportunity to participate in this uh board, which uh sort of provides a a mechanism for cooperation on the greenway. So that's, it includes uh the cities of Fayetteville, Johnson, Springdale, Lowell, Rogers, Bentonville, and now Belavista.
Thank you. Are there any questions at all? Yes, Larry?
Uh, representation, counselor, is 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 by community rather than by mileage? By those, if you have five miles versus one mile, you get five people on the committee versus one.
If you look at uh at Article Six, Membership of the Board, uh, the alliance is governed by a seven-member joint board consisting of a representative of each city through its internal bases. There's no minimum mileage. You don't get more representation because you have more miles or or less because you don't, so uh each city is represented just because they participate in.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, anything else? I entertain a motion to approve, please.
Show move.
Second.
Comments? Steve?
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
No.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Uh, Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, five to one.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with O.R. Colton Associates LLC, the total amount of $68,350 for provision of right-of-way acquisition services related to the Mercy Way Bridge project. Doug, any comments at all?
Uh, this this project has uh about eight property owners, 15 total uh transactions, including uh right-of-way, permanent construction easements and temporary construction easements.
Okay, any questions for Doug at all? Larry?
It says that they're allowed to do subcontracting subject to approval of the owner. Uh, are they planning to do any subcontracting for services?
I'm I'm sure they will for uh title searches, appraisals, review appraisals. Uh, and then if something has to go to court, there'll probably be consultants for that.
As opposed to them, i- if it goes to court because there's uh unwillingness to sell, you will have to exercise eminent domain. I'm assuming, will that come back to us?
I would I would have to do that action. They would provide the they would have done, had the appraisal, they would provide the expert testimony and all that, but that will be handled in-house. expert testimony and all that, but that will be handled in-house by me if it turned to litigation.
But usually then you call in expert witnesses and there's no provision for them, uh, to provide that service in their contract, I believe. Is that correct?
Uh, if you're asking me, I'm going to have to look. Um, Doug may know off the top of his head, but they will, let's. Let me go to scope.
That, that may be included in the per property, uh, pricing. And, you know, as of now, we don't know what those are going to be, but those are, those are things that depending on our doc's approval of right-of-way and the amount, may have to come back to you.
I guess my reading of the contract says that they're not including any time for expert witness for condemnation. So that would be an additional provision.
That would have to be additional. They said, that's, that would have to be additional, I'm certain of.
Right. Relocation services, it says, uh, they don't expect any, um, and there's no provision for costs in there on relocation. Um, my understanding that typically relocation and, uh, acquisitions like this involve residences or homesteads, I don't think we have any of those in the properties that, that, uh, that we're considering here. Uh, can we strike that altogether or indicate that the relocation services are not required and not included? They kind of say that in the language, but the, there's lots of paragraphs and lots of wording in there to that effect.
Larry, all I could tell you is that, uh, they have offered this contract. If we are going to, if the council is going to start striking provisions, we have no guarantee that the other side of the contract would accept them. So if the, if the council has a desire to look into that, then we would probably need to pull this off and have a chat with the contractor and see whether or not those items were agreeable. And then it would be up to the council to vote it down if, if those terms were not negotiable. I just don't want to get into the, I don't want to get into a process of us striking provisions here with the council and have the other side say, we're not doing this because we're not going to be anywhere if we do that. They'll have to change it. We'll have to come back to you again anyway.
Kind of delay the project.
And, and I, I guess I raised that question because that, uh, it would seem to me that we would have considered that in the course of negotiating the language that we have here, even though it came from the contractor, uh, that we don't include provisions that are not applicable, uh, they shouldn't even be in there, I guess, or in there and saying they're not, uh, not applicable to this contract. The next question I have is for Doug, and that is, he's probably seen the plans from the engineer, uh, of what's happening on the northeast corner of the intersection of Mercy Way and Highway 71. Um, the driveway access into the gas station there is of particular concern, uh, I guess only because I've dealt with one of those before and it cost me heavily to do that. Um, is that they have kind of an open access along the Mercy Way corridor and somewhat restricted but unrestricted access along the 71 side of their property. If we go to take that away, I think we will be, we should be prepared to pay them compensation for their loss of business. And if they don't claim that, I would be surprised.
Um. That's true. They anticipate that to be, that particular area to be the largest transaction of all.
But that has nothing to do with what we're talking about here.
Well, no, it, it, it does, but it doesn't. It, it does in the sense that if we're not willing to pay what they're asking for, and it may be substantial, that, uh, it will end up as eminent domain in, in Jason's court. Uh, so it is a concern to me, uh, relative to that issue.
Okay, anybody else?
There is no access to that property off of 71.
Well, the access today off of Mercy Way is unlimited. The access off of 71 is relatively unlimited if you're coming and turning northward off of Mercy Way onto 71.
But not to the gas station property.
Not off of 71 directly, but it does affect those who have second thoughts. When they turn north, they say, oh, I want to stop and pick up a, uh, coffee, or I want to stop and pick up a pack of cigarettes, or I want to stop and pick up, uh, something from their deli. So, uh, there is a, a question or an issue about loss of business that will be reflected by taking away that immediate, easy, direct access.
I don't want to get into negotiating values of each lot because we're shooting ourselves in the foot, uh, by, by making these, uh, uh, acknowledgements in the meeting because we, we don't know, but certainly these statements would be used against us if it means more value to be paid to the owners at this point. So I would just caution to, to not, uh, get into the detail of any particular lot until we have full information on that.
I agree.
On this interest.
Okay. Point, point.
Jim, did you want to say something?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay. All righty.
Both to approve.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler. Wilms.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Jackson Brown Palitut Architects, Inc., for the architectural services related to the construction of the new fire station. At the council, or at the work session, excuse me, uh, we had guests from all the architectural firms as well as the civil engineers. Um, they are not with us tonight. We didn't feel that we needed to do so. Um, is there any discussion at all? The chief is here if you want to bounce any questions off. Yes, Larry.
Just for the record, Mayor, could you identify, uh, the number of firms that submitted and the number we interviewed?
Fourteen, uh, submitted and, and eight were interviewed.
For, for this particular project?
For all the projects, yes, because we were trying to see if we could get perhaps one architect that would cover it all. And then the architects also offer the civil engineers if we decided to go that route. Anybody else?
Can you, can you clarify that last comment, please?
Um, the architects that came and interviewed offered civil engineering services in combination with the architect if we wanted to go that route.
Yeah.
And, and it, did we take that option or did we not?
Oh, no. Larry, if you read through, then you'll see that we have chosen one civil engineer and they will report to the city as opposed to reporting to the architect, and that's CEI, and that's later on in.
I, I, I understand that. I understand that.
But the MEP and the structural stays with the architect. The civil is with the city. Sorry, MEP is mechanical engineering and plumbing. Sorry, electrical and plumbing.
I, I guess since we have that on the table, when you read the contract with CEI, they indicate that they would take the site plan from the architect, um, as a part of their development process as opposed to developing from scratch using a building footprint.
Well, they will take the plan from the architect since, as you know, since you're in that business, they have to work very closely with the architect. Doesn't mean that they have to accept what the architect is putting together at all.
I, I, I guess for clarification, Mayor, the city would not be, uh, subject to accepting the architect's site plan as it trans- transitions from the architect to the engineer.
Okay.
And, and there are, there are firms who will take the architect's layout and refine that and, and, uh, tune it up to a final project. Um, there are some that will just take the building footprint and develop the rest of the site based upon, uh, good engineering practice for site development.
Well, CEI is a very respectable firm. We have worked with them before. Um, I'm sure that they will do a top-notch job for us. We're going back now to the architectural services for the construction of a fire station. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve, please.
Go move.
Second.
Last words? Lane?
Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Steve, Burke?
Hi.
Wake up.
Uh, you're muted. Can't hear you.
There we go. There you go.
Now, now I, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have to hear you.
Okay. Carried, six to zero. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with Jackson Brown Palitut Architects, Inc., for the architectural services related to the construction of a new fire training facility. It's a ready discussion available. Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Go move. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, approving the Bella Vista Advertising and Promotion Commission's appointment of Ashley Dozier as a tourism industry commissioner to fill an unexpired term ending July the 31st, 2020, resulting from the resignation of Rich Seiker, and the same appointment for a full term beginning August the first, uh, 2020. Um, Doug, at the work session, you, uh, expressed gratitude that Ashley was going to be joining your ranks.
Absolutely. Yep, yep. Um, so just to let everybody know, and John pointed this out during the work session, but we did go through the RFQ process. You know, we did solicit, uh, you know, submissions for anyone that might be interested. Uh, and, and quite honestly, I mean, we knew that Ashley was interested. Uh, her and her husband actually own an Airbnb. And it's actually, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's trail oriented, if you will. And that's not just biking, that is hiking or whatever. Ashley and her husband, Eric, they, uh, as much as their, their Airbnb is, uh, presents itself, you know, for the convenience of bikers, they actually don't, are not bikers themselves. They walk the trails, uh, like a lot of other people do. Um, she, uh, um, no, I, is, uh, was in, uh, military. Uh, you know, she graduated from, uh, West Point. Um, everybody gets to meet her. She's a very impressive young lady, and, uh, we certainly forward, you know, to a different perspective, you know, on our AMP commission, you know, moving forward. So she comes highly recommended. I don't know if John has anything to add or not, but.
Yes, I agree with that. She's, uh, she's, uh, I think a big addition.
Say, entertain a motion to approve, please.
Go move.
Okay. Councilmember Wilms.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Height Jackson Associates, P.A., for architectural services related to the construction of a public safety facility. Steve Graves is here if you have any questions at all. Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Go move.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Carried, zero. Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into contracts with Stevens, Inc., primary, and Cruz and Associates, Inc., secondary for bond underwriters for the city. Are there any questions at all? Comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Go move. Second.
Thank you. All right.
Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
And Wilms.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with CEI Engineering Associates, Inc., for engineering services related to the construction of a fire training facility. Comments? Larry?
Uh, when you look at, uh, items O, P, and Q on our agenda, um, item O has an upset number of about $60,210. Item P has an upset number of about 57, $54,720. And the last one is the public safety billing has an upset number of about 77,125. Those are not the cap numbers, but that's what they're showing in their contract as we're acting on, uh, as likely being their total fees. Uh, my question is, is that are these numbers in line with what our budgeting has been by Raymond James for the project to date?
Yes. They are. Anybody else? Entertain a motion to approve, please.
Go move.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Carried, zero.
Next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with CEI Engineering Associates, Inc., for engineering services related to the construction of a new fire station. Comments at all? Entertain a motion to approve.
Go move. Second.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
Final resolution of the evening is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with CEI Engineering Associates, Inc., for engineering services related to the construction of a public facility. Are there any questions at all? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Go move. Second.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
The announcement, the next city council work session will be Monday, July 20th, 2020, at 5:30 by Zoom meeting. The next regular meeting of the city council, Monday, July 27th, 2020, at 6:30 by Zoom meeting. The planning commission work session will be July the 2nd, 2020, at 4:30 by Zoom meeting. The planning commission regular meeting will be July 13th, 2020, at 4:30 by Zoom. The Board of Zoning Adjustment will be July 1st, 2020, at 5:30 by Zoom meeting. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be July the 14th, 2020, by Zoom meeting. I hope that all of you will have the opportunity to see the fireworks on July the 3rd. Um, we have been putting out some, uh, bulletins, or Cassie has been, Cassie's now, uh, back up. or Cassie has been, Cassie's now back at work. We're going to, uh, open up the parking at five thirty, and the police will be on hand to make sure that everybody is spaced accordingly. Um, they can bring long chairs if they so desire, but they have to stay beside the car. And Cassie has also arranged to have it, um, streaming on Facebook. So, um, that's another alternative for folks who don't necessarily want to perhaps get into a large crowd situation, or if it's a really hot, humid night, which it normally is, then there's another alternative just to stay at home. There will also be boats, of course, allowed on the lakes. The lake rangers will be out, and there will be a member of our dive team in each boat with each lake ranger. Um, so it's going to be a great show. I hope you have enough opportunity to see it, and I wish all of you a very happy fourth, and to those of you that have joined us this evening, the same thing. Thank you. It's been a long one. I appreciate all your input and all your efforts and work. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.